Is it Abra?
Is that on?
Yes, here. You women, we can beat you and fight you.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome and thank you for coming to the special meeting of the general board today on Monday, December 7th, 2015. Once again, welcome. At this time, can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
Everybody, to mano a tu corazón, ready to begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is roll call. Marlene Fonseca, Capricia Baiesio, Michelle Corzantes, here. Galia Andrade, Ruben Chavez,
Here.
Cynthia Sandoval,
Here.
Angela Duarte, Yoli Garcia, Victor Ayala, Manuel Chacon,
Here.
Tom Williams,
Here.
Thank you, Michelle. With eight present, we do have court. This meeting is officially called to order at 6:05 PM. 7:05, 7:05 PM, sorry. Okay, at this time, we have general public comment. I don't have any speaker cards up here. Is there anybody here for a public comment? Please step forward. We'll go ahead and keep it at two minutes since we have this long.
I've been talking to people in the...
I'm sorry, hold on. Okay, good.
Yes, I've been talking to people in the community and we've been talking about terrorism and one of the things that comes up.
I'm sorry, that's not right. Let me do it with them. Go ahead. Give me a next to a couple seconds. Go ahead.
Like I said, I've been talking to people in the community and we've talked about terrorism and one of the areas of terrorism that we're concerned about, and that is gang activity. I mean, with the death of this gentleman up by my street on Mercury, 24 years old. He had no gang affiliation, but again, he was a victim of gang violence. So, I would ask that, you know, you address that issue more and more, maybe throughout the year, and think about public safety. You know, in many of the times that I've been before, different committees throughout the community, I can remember that my daughters, I have four daughters, only four daughters, had expressed their fear of the gang activity, drug activity in the area. So, when we talk about terrorism for our community, I think a lot has to do with gang activity. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here for public comment? Can we reset the agenda, please? Angela. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Auguste Rodriguez. I'm an active board member. I just came here today because I just found out I got booted off the board. It's... I didn't resign. I had a problem with the family and I needed some time off and I was basically dead. But somebody telling me I could take the time off and now I find out that it wasn't meant to happen like that, so I just want to ask the board if I can give both back on the board. And it's heartbreaking, you know? I went through a rough time. I just lost my sister three weeks ago. I needed a little time, but I just found out I got kicked off the board, you know? It's pretty heartbreaking, but you know, I just want a second chance to just take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. As you all know, he could be considered for a vacancy. And I do have my idea that it was a resignation.
This is Melvin from the department. There was concerns for, you know, for the department's.
I would like to meet the agenda as far as the comments, the general debate or public comments. Can I do a general chat for discussing the topic for action and election board meetings?
I mean, the vacancy will be filled. He's absolutely able to come back and refill his seat. You guys just stopped the voting, man? It will be on the agenda to fill the seat. Is there anybody else here for public comment? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item number five. Moving on to item number five is the treasurer's report regarding LA 32 finances, discussion and possible action for approval for the LA 32 NC monthly expenditure report for November 2015. And for this, our treasurer, Michelle Rowe. Hello.
Thank you very much. Let me go ahead and project it as... So you guys can see it. Of course, it's in a routine, the wrong way, right? There we go. Okay. So, the report for November 2015. For this month, we have spent 147 on operations, 1,833 and 4 cents on outreach, a total of 1,984 cents. It is projected up here. If you have any questions or concerns, all invoices, checks and receipts are hard copies on the walls. We have them as well and they're projected on the wall. Thank you, Michelle Corzantes.
Are we done with the report?
No. Yeah, no. We need a motion to approve it once you guys have the numbers.
I want the motion to approve the budget as it was read.
The monthly expenditure report for November.
The monthly expenditure could have been...
I'll second that.
Need somebody to second it.
I do. I second it.
Thank you.
Marlene Fonseca?
Hold on, we have discussion now. I'm trying to take a minute. I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the monthly expenditure report for November 2015 made by Ruben Chavez submitted by Angela. Is there any public comment regarding this motion? Any board discussion? To my right, anybody? Okay, please put her in the roll call, please. Marlene Fonseca?
Yes.
Capricia Baiesio, absent. Michelle Corzantes, yes. Ruben Chavez?
Yes.
Cynthia Sandoval?
Yes.
Angela Duarte?
Yes.
Yoli Garcia? June Ayala?
Yes.
Tom Williams?
Yes.
Manuel Chacon?
Yes.
Motion passes 801, month of November for 2015 monthly reporting.
I would like to make a motion to move item 11 up, to fill in the vacancies. That's actually not filling them. It says that they would be filled purely through my process. Would I like to move item 11 up for a second?
Will you repeat that for me, please?
Wait, wait, wait.
Item number 11, filling in the vacancies. I'm asking you to move it up.
I second that.
Thank you. It was already seconded, thank you.
Can I also make another motion on top of that? When we get through the discussion then? Voting on it, then I can make one? Then I can take them.
Hold on. I need a minute.
Yes, that's what I just asked. When we get done with it?
Hold on, Ruben, please. I need a minute.
Can I make another one regarding something else?
I think we need to get a recording sent to him first if we could be done with it. Because I can't be taking minutes. Do you have the video? All women here take a minute. Are they going?
So, I'm just going through the bylaws regarding the motion to... Regarding, yeah, just when you were reviewing your bylaws regarding the process to fill vacancies, I noticed in the past, I believe in... Just wanted to check, I believe there was a... You know, some bylaws called for a period to announce vacancies before the board can vote on it. I don't see that requirement in the bylaws, in this current set of bylaws. The only consideration which I know has been from the past is the order in which you consider candidates for a vacancy. So, you're familiar with that process?
Okay.
So, I don't see a process here regarding a waiting period.
Yeah, just because I think the only... I'm sorry. The only time period we have to wait for is when we change the bylaws or amend to the bylaws. I think that's the only waiting period that we have to post. But I understand you do, we used to have that. We're actually doing the time period for the outreach committee to actually do that, but that's one of my concerns, that that was changed in the bylaws, but we didn't really approve for that change, so that's concerning my opinion.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I mean, my intention and because it was, the agenda was revised a second time when Michelle brought up her MIR and it changed that it was to fill in January and have it advertised for the month, just so that we can outreach more. It felt like it was, there was, there wasn't any outreach then and there were people here to fill seats on the general board meeting and they weren't notified, but that's okay.
So, let's do one thing right now. So, there's a motion on the board on the floor right now to move that agenda item up before we get into discussions, so let's see if the board wants to...
Was it seconded?
I would second it.
You seconded the motion to move up the...
Yes, we can discuss it in a moment, whatever you feel about.
I have a question and clarification of... Is there anything in the bylaws in regards to filling it during the general board meeting versus a special meeting?
Good question. Not addressed in the bylaws at all that way.
Nobody was notified. It wasn't posted. It wasn't advertised enough.
The mic for you.
It happened before. People knew. Okay, let's continue with discussion on this. We do have a motion on the floor to move item 11 to be heard next. It was made by... Who was it made by? Angela? And it was seconded by Victor?
These are the bylaws.
Thank you.
These are the bylaws. Anybody else? These are the bylaws that we have go by. These are the bylaws.
Chair, can I ask for a few minutes just so we can review the bylaws ourselves really quick? Is that okay, board members? We can take a few minutes just to review the bylaws?
How many do you have to do now?
Five minutes.
Up to the chair.
And regards to filling vacancies. Filling vacancies.
You know what page on the bylaws that were addressed after we've been...
Page number six. Page six, section six on the...
I brought candidate application forms on my table. Did anybody bring them today? Has anybody submitted a candidate application form?
You've seen before, have brought people on the board who need to have a seat. The thing is, we need more people to have forms. Look at today.
Just go ahead and take a few minutes to review the bylaws and we're going to open it up to public comment.
Are there particular questions that the board has regarding the bylaws? Yeah, I have.
Well, his second question on just the bylaws, not...
Technically, we should be voting on the motion to move the agenda item up or not. So, before we really discuss anything else, the board wanted to review the bylaws. So, are there any questions on the bylaws right now that I don't...
No question whatsoever.
The bylaws.
No.
I have a question. On item B on page nine, top run is up of any other region. Would that apply to today's filling of vacancies since we didn't have elections? This is when we...
Ruben, please give her a...
Typically, that top run is up of any other reason we use immediately following an election, but since we haven't had an election recently, would item B apply to today?
Yeah, this really, this just gives you the order in which you can consider candidates from, in what order you can consider candidates. It doesn't... It just, you know, if there's other candidates from other regions, then that will be your second level of where you would look for possible candidates.
It doesn't specify, so...
Yeah.
Okay, I think at this point, we're going to open it up to public. Is there any public comment regarding moving agenda item 11 up?
Just a quick thing I noticed on the bylaws. It says, "In no event shall a vacancy be filled while a general election is scheduled." So, we're assuming that an election isn't going to happen anytime in the next sixty days, correct? That's all right.
Is it calendar?
Back here.
This is...
All right. That's all.
Yeah, no, so, I'm sorry, I didn't formally introduce myself to everyone here. Melvin Canis from the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. And that's Kathleen Quinn. She's also from the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment.
Yes.
Some of you may know her from the funding program, but she's coming over to the field side of things in the department, and so she's also here to provide support.
You won't be funding anymore?
Well, you're going to get both...
I'll be moving.
You wear both hats. You wear both hats.
Yeah, currently, yes.
That's fine. I hope your pay replace that.
We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment regarding moving item 11 to be heard next? Is there any board comment on this? Okay, let's go ahead and take the vote. Yes, Tom?
My concern would be that this is a special court meeting and it should be advertised through the normal board, general board meetings, per one seat each month. However, one of the issues will be coming up soon, and it's when do we have our election.
Okay, he has the floor, guys. Thanks.
When the general election will be and nobody can be appointed within sixty days of that. So, there's a time issue, but January should be okay. To hold it, especially if we would appoint everybody to hold it now. Okay, just continue to the general board meeting and general.
Any other board comment?
I think it's still important for us to start filling in the vacancies as soon as possible. It's on the agenda. We have people here. Let's fill it as much as we can so we have form at our next meeting.
I agree.
Ruben, I'm sorry. I, we're going this way. Okay, so I actually do have a comment on this item. Like I said, the wording was intended to be changed. We're going to leave it up to the vote, but I would prefer that we fill them in January just so that we could outreach and get the people here. There were people here on Monday and they weren't notified, so that's my only issue with it. Anyone to my right?
I say we just fill in the seats. We need people. We're early making form. We need to fill in seats tonight. If anyone's very interested, they need to take the seat. I think so.
Yeah, I also agree. We need to fill these seats. There's... Some of our people are checking out shit and we need to fill these seats up.
Yeah, my sentiment is exactly. I think that we need to fill in the seats. It is on the agenda and it has been okay to move, so let's move the motion.
I'm in agreeance with having this thing done tonight or any night that we have a meeting if there's a vacancy because at the end of the day, it's up to us. Doesn't matter who's running and who's interested, which is fine, it's admirable. But in the end, we have to vote a yea or a nay to appoint that person, he or she, whoever is interested. After they say why they're interested in becoming a board member or a director, then it's up to us to vote however we feel on the matter. But we need to do it now, not ASAP, but now, tonight.
I'm in agreement on doing outreach, it's a special meeting. I would prefer it to be done at a general board meeting where we have more stakeholders participating.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and take a vote on moving item 11 up to be heard next. And this motion was made by Angela and seconded by Victor. Ruben, I'm not to be mad at you for your...
That movement. Doesn't matter. You can give it to Victor. It's fine. I withdraw my second. I'll go back.
Okay, can we take a vote? All in favor of moving item 11 to be heard immediately? Raise your hand. Six, all opposed. Raise your hand. Three. Any extensions? Six, three, zero. Motion passes. Okay, we're going to go ahead and fill these vacancies per the LA 32 NC bylaws, Article 5, Section 6. We currently have four vacancies. We're going to have at least one more after this. And we'll start, you know, let's start by asking, is there anybody here to fill seats? Can you stand up, please?
I'll fill it.
Okay. Is there, we have two north region directors. Is there anybody here? Augie, you were north region. Can you step forward, please? Is there anybody else? Is there anybody else here who ran for the north region?
What is the boundaries of the north region?
The north, there's...
Boundaries.
Yeah, there's a map on the back. The north region goes behind LaGuardia Park to Mayfair, starts from Collins.
I understand. Yeah, but if they could speak it, everybody could hear it. They don't have to look.
Okay, Augie, let's have you step forward since you're the only one here from the same region that ran and fortunately to resign.
Yeah, hello, my name is Auguste Rodriguez.
I'm sorry, let me just explain the process of what every candidate is going to be able to do and I apologize for this being a big spread on a bunch of people. But we're going to give each of you two minutes to tell us who you are, your interests, and why you want to be a board member. And then we'll go ahead and let each board member ask you one question. If there's any follow-up questions. Two questions, the same way we do the board discussion, we'll do the same. Everybody will be entitled to two questions. They don't have to ask both two questions. Okay, so you have two minutes, Augie, and as soon as Angela gets that going, one, please start. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, hello, my name is Auguste Rodriguez. I want to be one of the board members for the north region because I was born in Braves, gray hair in the neighborhood since birth. You know, and I know a lot of people. I've done a lot of things for the community and I help a lot of people. And I just want you to just give me another chance because you know what I could do and I want to prove it to those that don't know what I could do just to that.
Thank you, Augie. Is there anybody, does anybody have questions for Augie? Let me start with Ruben. Anybody over here have a question for Augie? How about to my right? Victor?
I kind of like believe Mr. Rodriguez, he's been on the board for a while and he's always been involved in committees. He's helped out with LaGuardia Park. He's helped out with the council with all kinds of events. He's the person that we need on this board, so just the kind of person that we need for this board.
Okay, at this point, let's just ask questions. When it's board discussion after there's a nomination, then, and a motion to appoint him, then we'll, you can make a comment. But at this point, we're just asking him questions. Ruben?
Take you back on that question. You said you do this and that and the other. I already know, but maybe constituents and other board members may not know. Can you give us a couple, two or three things that you've done for that community, please?
I've helped a lot of families get homes that didn't have, you know? I've put my place out there to give everybody, I give anybody my shirt off my back that needs it. That's the way I was raised. You know, you want something for me, I'm there for you.
Here was an example of who you helped.
Who I've helped?
Without names.
I've helped, I'm going to say, Romero's families.
No names.
Okay. I've helped District 14 with a lot of things they're doing, so I like to donate my time, you know, since I live here, might as well give back.
Okay, so at this point, he does need to be nominated by a board member. If anybody's willing to nominate Augie?
I'll nominate Augie to be gone from our board.
I second that.
Well, it's not a motion and we're, so we aren't actually going to have public discussion. So, there's a nomination. Can I have... Okay, let's do a roll call vote, Michelle, if you can, please. This will be a roll call vote on having Augie Rodriguez fill out a seat in the north region. Marlene Fonseca? Yes. Michelle Corzantes? Yes. Ruben Chavez?
I don't see.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Cynthia Sandoval? Angela Duarte? Yoli Garcia? Victor Ayala? Manuel Chacon? Tom Williams?
Yes.
Nine, zero, zero. Motion... Nine, zero, zero, motion passes. It's not a motion. I'm sorry, uh, Augie, nomination passes. Congratulations, please take your seat. We still have your, um, name tag. We see this still won. Is there anybody here from the North Region? You live in the North Region?
Don't live. It says there works and/or what?
I mean, you're a stakeholder in the North Region.
There's three qualifications, and I will give you my qualifications.
I'm a real estate broker.
I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, uh, under the qualifications of working in the area, as well as living, I'm a real estate broker. My license is good from one end of California to the other. My PO box happens to be my, my absolute mailing address for my business. It happens to be in the Alserino Post Office, which happens to be in the North Boundary. So therefore, I qualify as having my business placed on the North Side. Now, why would I like to be able to represent our community? Because I think they would really need more representation, diverse representation on this board. We need to be able to have more opinions. Uh, sometimes what I find is that we don't have a lot of opinions. Everything seems to be the same old opinion based on what I consider to be an imperial presidency. And I have no problems, as people know, to speak up and tell you how I feel. Uh, let's see, what I like to, December 10th, 1967, I moved to this community. I graduated from Wilson High School. I like the Cal State LA. I, uh, I've been involved in many, many different programs here. The last issue that I was involved in is making sure that the, the full liquor license was given to, to the brand. And so, my, my issue, having been an expert in, in the liquor industry, and also as a PUI counselor, is to make sure that our community is safe from the abuses of alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Um, questions from board members?
Oops, excuse me, sorry about that.
Questions to my left? Right? Does any stakeholder, okay, go ahead, Charles?
The concern I have, uh...
No concerns, questions.
The, the, yes, thank you. The question I'd like to ask you is, uh, for the times that you've come and spoke, which you had every right, you're the amendment of the country, to speak wherever you wanna speak. My question is, uh, you were telling us what to do and how to do it and all that. My question to you is, why didn't you do that when you were a board member in the past? You didn't practice those type of things that you were trying to get us to practice.
Well, let me answer that, Ruben. Let me answer it the best way that I can. That's your opinion. Thank you.
Oh, we're not done, Mr. Pacheco. We're not done. Does anybody else have questions for now? Yoli?
So, quite on your statement, you mentioned why you wanna join this neighborhood council. So, how would you contribute to this neighborhood council, running in a more civil, um, getting things, uh, civil manner, getting things done, not stalling the process?
Not stalling the process. If stalling the process means protecting the people's rights, defending the people's money, making sure that it is spent properly, it is our money. It's not your money. It's not the politicians' money. It's nobody's money but ours. We're the taxpayers. And we're the stakeholders as well. But first and foremost, it's the taxpayer. I have a business here. I own property. I raise my children here. When other people, some people including people on the board have told me, "Get out. No, they'll never make it in this community." Well, I'm very proud. There's an old saying, "You can tell by their tree by their fruit." All my daughters have gone to college, all of my daughters are professionals, and none of them have ever been caught breaking the law. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, we're not done yet, though. I'm gonna go ahead and, and, um, oh, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Would you be willing to chair a committee?
If I have to.
If you have to, is that...
If I have to. I mean, I don't know. I, I've done the bylaws in the past, but when I did the bylaws, again, the idea of the imperial presidency came up, and the president at that time decided it didn't like the way the bylaws were made. Ruben was on that, Yoli was on that. And that was taken away from us and done with the bylaws. And I, and I've told you before, one of the reasons I think that the mess that we have here is because these bylaws are not just communities. These bylaws were made by Dunn, for whatever purposes they had in mind, and most, from what I can tell, don't even know what's an old bylaw. They don't know exactly how they're, even tonight is an example of that. Having a discussion as to which way it goes, or how does it affect it, or can we do it, this is the things that I see all the time. And I do, and I do fault, over and over again, the lack of training and education on the part of Dunn and nobody's here. And also, I believe that they do not understand the back of the process when it comes to parting through procedure.
Thank you.
Mr. Pacheco, I think I've known you for a couple of years already on this board. I just wanna make sure and ask you, would you be able to come in with a fair and open mind on this board? And help us understand regulatory procedures more, since you're very familiar, than, um, in a more, um, working together way?
You know, when I was asked and surprised to chair that one meeting, what had to do with the Lombardi issue, I think I was probably the most fairest person that was on that board. Afterwards, both sides came to me and say, "Why didn't you take a side?" Because I promised from the very beginning I would not. And I believe that that is the role of the president, is to take no sides whatsoever unless it's absolutely necessary. Because then fairness isn't there. It's a one-sided issue. Yes, I will do what I can, from all my experience.
You already have a question.
Wait a minute, you said we can have two questions?
Okay.
Just because some says no.
I did say two. I did say two. Make sure it's a question, please.
Pardon me?
A question, not a comment.
It'll be a question.
It's a question.
Okay.
Well, I agree a hundred percent in everything you said. Piggyback the, um, Angela's, uh, question. Uh, you said, "If you have to," I'd like to ask you if you're willing to go beyond that, because I like how you perform and how you do things. Really, go for that. I have a concern, so your answer of "if I have to." You just stated what you've done, what you're doing in this community, which I applaud, okay?
Question, Ruben.
So I'm asking him in the question, are you willing to take, uh, without the, without hesitance? Hesitation? Yes, uh, uh, chair or be a board member of a committee, that committee or any other committee that you're asked by the president.
I think that every individual has the right and deserves the right to make a decision of what is best for themselves. If somebody tries to put me on a committee just to rail with me, grapple with me, to keep me quiet, or to keep me busy, I have a right to say no. But if I also feel that there's a committee where I can share my talents, I will do that. As a broker, I have stayed away from being, when I have been asked in the past to be part of the, of the, uh, of the land use, because I felt that it might somehow be seen as being some kind of a way of me to advance my career, to advance my business. Although I would not do it ever, I said, "No, I won't do it." That's why I said, "If I have to." If somebody were to say, "Ugo, you need to be on, you know, land use," you know, I'd really have to think about it a couple times. I don't want people to perceive that the reason that I've been doing this, or anything I've ever done voluntarily, is because I've been trying to get ahead. I don't need any of this to get ahead financially. I, I am very well financial, as you know. As a broker, I can make quite a bit of money. But I really, really, from the, the very beginning that I came to this community, from the very first day that I had to go register at Wilson High School and that counselor, tried to make, put me into those, route me into those shops, and I told him, "No way." I'm a science and engineering route major, and I will take my college-bound classes. And he made me stay there. I have been fighting for this community ever since. And I, and I, to be honest with you, have been very hurt when people here have criticized my past. Thank you.
One last question. I'm gonna rephrase this a bit. If you felt you can chair a committee with your knowledge and experience, would you consider that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead. Is there a nomination? We're not, we're not gonna take stakeholder questions at this time, I'm sorry. It's quite a long one with the board questions, and we really need to move on. Do we have any, do you have a question to hear? Okay, so we have a nomination from Tom Williams. We don't give a second. Uh, Michelle, we're not giving a second. Michelle, can you do?
Uh, what is he filling, what seat again?
North.
North seat. Marlene Fonseca?
abstained.
Michelle Corzantes, yes. Ruben Chavez?
Yes.
Cynthia Sandoval?
Yes.
Angela Dorton?
Yes.
Yoli Garcia? Victor Ayala?
Yes.
Manuel Chagon?
Yes.
Tom Williams?
Yes.
What about Augie?
Seven, oh, sorry, you're right. Augie Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Pacheco, please come and take your seat.
Eight, zero, two. Eight, zero, two. Yeah, two abstained, Marlene and Yoli abstained. And Augie is counted now because he has, uh, he has taken his ethics and funding. I have here on file.
Right, well, that's just for, um, funding items, but they can all, people...
Yeah, he can go for funding because he's on here. No, I know, good enough.
Go with the ball, that's the state. Yeah, they know, they can't, you guys, you know, board, the new board members, aside from Augie, will know that they can't run on any funding items. Okay, moving on to West Region. Is there anybody here to fill a West Region seat? Come forward, please.
Good evening.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Can we, Victor, can we get you back up here so that you have a, so...
That's okay, I can know.
I don't have a problem, but he's gonna vote, and it's, I mean, it's only fair to the candidates and everybody. Yeah, it is for the seat, because... Okay, can we get the timer on two minutes, please?
Good evening, my name is Troy Carver Hall. I'll be willing to fill a vacancy for the West. For those who don't know me, uh, I have resigned from this community for quite a few years. I went to, uh, high school here, elementary school here, as well as, uh, middle school, as they call it now. Uh, currently reside on Stockbridge Avenue here locally. Um, I've done quite a few things for this community, one of which was I am the main organizer of the Ascaloos Challenge. I help locally here at Ascaloos Park. Uh, we raised, um, quite a bit of money for a couple entities within Alserino. Um, I'm currently a, um, committee member on arts and culture, and I also work as a West Coast Director for Azlan Athletics. We do five Ks, ten Ks, and spread the news of health and wellness throughout many communities, not just here in Alserino.
Thank you. Uh, board member questions? Go ahead, Andrew. Or, Tom, do you have a question? Andrew?
I just have one concern.
Question.
It is a question, it's a concern. Let me finish. My question is, with your personal relationships on the board, would you be able to be fair and be open-minded to everybody on the board in regards to the process and respect the bylaws and code of civility?
Absolutely. I have a personal relationship with quite a few members here on the board. Uh, they only, like I said, I sit on a committee already, so, answer your question, Angela? Absolutely, yes.
I have a question. Would you be willing to chair any committees?
Absolutely.
To my right, any questions? Uh, Ruben?
You just mentioned you're a member of a committee. Can you tell us what committee you're a member of, and also what committees you may consider?
I'm currently a committee, I'm a member of ALA 32 of Arts and Culture. Any other committee that would like to have me on their committee, I would be more than happy and more than willing to assist and help in any way I can.
Any other questions? Angela?
I'm thinking how to phrase it. Well, Troy, will any of the events and organizations that you're with fall into any conflict of interest on this board?
Can we, you know, that, that's really on a case-by-case basis, and we can't really entertain a kind of...
He already said the organizations he's with.
All right, so we'll entertain it at the moment that it comes. It's a legal matter, and it, it may not even impact, that would, that would require city attorney advice, and so, I think so, there are questions, we can, thank you.
Uh, Victor, come on.
Uh, just, actually, I have a question for the governor of the senate. Also, are you conducting the meeting today here, or what is your...
Victor, we're not, um, no, no.
He answered a question. I, I haven't got to ask the question.
We're asking candidate questions right now.
I understand, but he answered.
I think he's like trying to...
I'm just, I'm trying to figure out what is wrong with today.
I'm not running that question, not the, uh, the president's question.
Okay.
Okay, um, do we have a nomination?
I'll nominate.
Point of order. If there is more than one candidate, shouldn't we not hear from another candidate?
Is there another candidate here from the North Region? I asked everybody to stand up, and nobody else stood.
No, no, you said the West. Wasn't it?
I'm sorry, West.
Two Norts are done.
West.
I know.
Um, I have a question.
Is there somebody else here from the West?
Yep.
Okay.
You need to stand up?
Every, anybody here from the West, then please come forward.
Good evening, directors. Uh, I'm also eligible for the West Region as a, as a resident there, uh, in the Rose Hills community.
No, let her do her time first, please.
Thank you. My name is Anthony Manzano. Uh, this evening, I'd like to apply or run as a potential candidate nominee for the West Region. I live in the Rose Hills community, and I'm the fourth generation living in the same house. I also qualify to be a candidate in the North Region and in the East Region, but at this time, I'm wishing to fill the vacancy in the West Region. I am Anthony Manzano. You guys have seen me here, most of you guys have seen me here for over ten years. I started way back in 2004. The Neighborhood Council was in its infancy, and at that time, I encouraged guidance, direction, and assisted the Department of Neighborhood Enforcement with many of the, uh, policies and procedures that they implement at this time. I think the primary one that I influenced was to having a standard, across the board, constructed set of bylaws for all neighborhood councils in the entire city. Meaning, we all have one format, one table of contents, and one, uh, uh, policies that we all follow. And all neighborhood councils, uh, apply their bylaws, uh, in that same format. But as a stakeholder, I continually, every day, give it back to the community. I average minimum two hours, sometimes up to five hours, every single day. I have incurred over 10,000 hours of community service. And I am a highly recognized resident in my community, and I am eligible to run as the West Region candidate. So if you guys have any questions, I'll feel free to answer them, and hopefully you guys accept me as a West Region Director here on the ALA 32 Neighborhood Council.
Questions? Andrew, okay. Anthony, out of all the community service that you've done for the community, give us the last three things that you've done.
The very last thing I did occurred less than one hour ago. I finished doing the fire department radio call for Battalion Two. I was up in the University Hills community at the corner of Old Sullivan and Barnett, and by your area, yes, and I was communicating with certain members throughout Battalion Two, as extensive and up towards Eagle Rock. Another thing that I have done, which would have been yesterday, I volunteered, excuse me, I'm just representing, Saturday, I volunteered and gave nine hours of community service on Saturday. Five hours, uh, with the 10 to 11 carers activity, and four hours decorating the Rose Hills Natural Station at the intersection of Main Drive and Monroe. And then the third thing, going back, as we said, the last three things, would have been the week prior, and that's doing daily graffiti removal. and that's doing daily graffiti removal. Every single day, me and another neighbor are out there removing the graffiti on my neighborhood, every single day.
Thank you. Next question, anybody? Ruben?
You mentioned that you're eligible as a candidate for the board here on two regions. One, the West, which you've spoken of. The other, I didn't get it, didn't hear it correctly, what the other one is. And I'd like to ask you if you would be willing to run for the other vacancy when it comes up on the other region that you also qualify. And I'd also like to ask you, what makes you qualify for another region also? Because you qualify for two, so how is it you qualify for two? That's what, three questions?
You got two questions.
I actually do qualify for three regions, the North, the East, and the West where I reside, that's my home address. The North Region, I qualify because I do receive mail at 4927, which happens to be the council member's office of the constituent center. But I also have a Chase account, which still happens to be one of the few accounts that I have. So, it's also located in the North. And the East Region, obviously, most people qualify for that, but I am a regular attendee and cardholder of the Alserino Library. And that qualifies me because I've got regular business there, I'm familiar with the librarian, and I do conduct a lot of archive and history research from that location. And I think those are the three questions you asked?
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, Mr. Pacheco.
Anthony, you and I have had our differences in the past in terms of bylaws and stuff, but we've been able to work that out as well, right? And we work together in our community, making sure things are good for our community. I also noticed that, and recently, people have been kind of not so nice on this board towards you. Would that in any way hinder you from giving your best to this particular board and doing the best that you can?
Actually, it won't hinder me. It makes me brighter. Because when people bring opposition, barricades, obstacles, what it takes is someone to solve them. I have regularly always been a problem solver, and I've been doing this for years. I understand the necessary needs to make executive decisions. I could explain to you guys the proper way of making an executive decision, I being the former president. But aside from that, the bylaws are important, and I'm glad you bring that up because we may have just slight differences. Maybe I say 2% out of the 100% of our communication with each other. But it's important that the bylaws are enforced, it's important that this neighborhood council understands what they're reading, and has recently passed, I believe a month ago, that this board should increase itself back to 21 board members, just like the board voted on it. So, it's not the bylaws, the stakeholders asked for this, the board approved it, and now it's up to the Department of Neighborhood and Parliament to apply it, and this should be applied before the next election.
Thank you.
One last question. Anthony, will you share your experience and knowledge to members of this board if you get approved?
Absolutely. The way to do that is to have a properly-agenda meeting, have a forum, and then we need a director to suspend the rules. Then when they suspend the rules, we'll take a second. That second will give us the opportunity for the board to take a vote. And once we're talking off-applied agenda subject matters, then we can talk freely, just like we're doing right now. And you guys can understand, comprehend, learn, and realize what it takes to be a real, true public servant. And not just what we're reading in the bylaws, not what we want to do from our hearts, but to be able to be speaking to each other, just like if we were friends out on the street. I know how to do this, but we haven't done it because, of course, there's an agenda to follow, of course, there's policies and practices to follow, there's a lot of business to take care of with the stakeholders. So, we don't have that time to get to know each other for half an hour. But maybe, if we all just sit down and have a retreat, a discussion, a meeting, if you want to call it a meeting, whichever fishing would be, but just suspend the rules for 15 or 20 minutes, ask all the questions, I can give answers.
Thank you.
Mr. Manzano, I'm delighted to come here and apply. Out of all the committees that you see that we have here, public safety, environmental, and educational, what committee interests you the most? I'm trying to figure out where you're hardest. So, out of the committees that we have on this board, what committee would actually be interested to conduct business?
The primary committee that I think is of most importance, by default, is the Public Safety Committee. I have gone to train the public on how to be neighborhood watch representatives three times through the Holland Station. I have served through the Fire Department's First Emergency Response Team. I'm a Level Two, and I'm Fire Station 47 team leader. So, when a crisis or an emergency happens, every single volunteer assigned to Station 47 checks in with me. So, public safety is important, and what I need to express to you guys is that the neighborhood council has to understand its urgency and express the same. It just can't be one neighbor, one team leader, trying to do everything for neighborhood watch and protecting the public and being the first responder. I need the help of all of you, and guess what? You need my help too. Thank you.
I have a question.
By Yoli.
Yes. So, you've mentioned about your expertise and past leadership roles in this NC. Now, under your leadership as president, during that time, was a very hostile environment in the board. There was a lot of...
I object to this. This is not a question.
It is a question.
That's a question, that's a question.
It's not personal, it's a fact. It's a fact. So, my question... Other board members were allowed to.
I'm sorry, that's a question. She has a right to ask a question.
Other board members did the same thing.
They did.
So, that aspect, he brought his leadership expertise to the floor. I did not forget. And it was during your leadership that we almost entered exhaustive efforts when you were president. Then, when you were treasurer, we entered exhaustive efforts. I will get there, just like you said, to the president, to give you time. Please let me turn up the game. Thank you. So, when you were treasurer, you went into exhaustive efforts because you did not submit the required paperwork from then. So, my question to you is, now that you're, that you would like to sit on this board, what would you do different so that the board functions well and we don't have... We don't enter exhaustive efforts. What from your part would you do different this time? And are you considering filling the consecutive office?
If it's needed, my type and capabilities are efficient to fill in the recording secretary. But to go back in time, when I was the president, we did have one difficulty that was brought to my attention as president, and that was we had two board members, not knowing who they were at the time, having email exchanges. I, as president, was left out of the email exchange. So, I was unable to be aware of the conflict until after it had already escalated. That's not my fault. I don't know who you email, I don't know who he, she emails, I don't know who he emails. But as president, they have to sort of prevent this from happening. Secondly, while I was the treasurer, I myself put the neighborhood council to freeze our funds. That led us to exhaustive efforts. But as a treasurer, just like another director I've seen mention, we are to protect public funds. And as treasurer, I was against earmarking money for a nonprofit organization at the time of the board vote when we approved the budget. That's not how this neighborhood council, or any neighborhood council in the city, spends money. As the treasurer, I would not sign the documentation. And I still will not do it. Because you do not earmark money at the beginning of the year and approve the budget and claim that that approves the expense. It does not work that way, and the current treasurer will do the same. So, we went to exhaustive efforts because the second signature, once I wouldn't sign, but there were some things that Dan was saying, "Please get this through because we're having elections and other things coming up", the second signature resigned. And now that we do not have a second signature, and it makes it very difficult for the treasurer to do her work, or his work, and my time was mine work. Without a second signature, you basically cannot function. And thinking from funds being frozen, which I initiated, and I took the president to City Hall to do this, we went to exhaustive efforts because we lost our second signature. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did you, okay, go ahead.
You know, Anthony. You know, Anthony, I remember being on that board and being told that you had been somehow not diligent in your job, but then to come to find out that it was all wrong. I mean, they had said that what you ever tried to do is make sure that, they could say that you didn't put the report because you weren't getting the statements. And yet, nobody ever told you, you never, you didn't get statements, right? Now, Anthony, I want to ask you this. There are people on this board, they don't seem to like your association because you're very strong about our community on the West Side, Rose Hills. Would that be a problem for you?
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Pacheco, as a director. I'm gonna just touch on it lightly. Yes, the Department of Neighborhood and Parliament was providing false information. When I froze the funds, we were not spending no money. So, therefore, the bank was not sending out no bank statements. Nothing was coming to my home. I would wait for the mailman, month on month on month and month, to assure treasurer that I could bring the appropriate documentation, which was a bank statement. But it comes to find out that the bank had made arrangements with the Department of Neighborhood and Parliament that if no funds are spent in that particular month, no statement is released. You think they would let me know? No, but they would ask board members to just knock on Anthony and say, "Hey, where's the bank statement? Where's the bank statement? Where's the receipts? Where's the bank statement?" There wasn't any. Not my fault, the bank didn't send them, and it was pre-arranged with the Department of Neighborhood and Parliament. So, if they knew I wasn't getting any bank statements, that automatically said we were spending zero dollars. In closing, I do want to mention, as long as the neighborhood council can fairly represent all of its stakeholders, all of them, in each of its six recognized communities, they're all in your agenda today. This is not the Alserino Neighborhood Council. 90032 is not encompass Alserino. It encompasses six communities. And we need to understand that, because there's people out there who do not come to the meeting because they're feeling that they're being excluded. For some reason, it's all Alserino, and I'll tell everyone on the board that no, it's not.
Let's ask the question and move on.
It's ALA 32 Neighborhood Council, that's what it is. It's ALA 32 Neighborhood Council. And if that's the way we recognize it, then we're treating everybody fairly. Thank you.
Okay. Is somebody nominating Anthony?
Wait a minute, point of order. How do you do that when you have two?
We're gonna, we're just gonna do by name. So, is there somebody nominating Anthony?
I'll nominate Anthony.
Okay, so, what we're gonna do is take a vote. When Michelle calls a name, you'll want to state the name of who you'd like to fill the seat. Whoever has the majority will fill the seat.
Just to clarify, there's eleven of you right now who can vote, correct? So, that means that the candidate with the majority votes will get a new position. Just clarify.
Can I just ask a question? If for any reason that... If for any reason the gentleman that asked first to be nominated cannot represent the West Region, can he run for the South? Because it doesn't say here that he cannot. It says any nomination of a stakeholder. Can he run again for the South as well, or he does not have the opportunity?
He's not nominated now, he can't because he's available.
If, I mean, it clearly says on the back page that the stakeholder has to live in the region or be a stakeholder in the region that they're seeking to fill, unless they ran in the general election. Then they're eligible to run in any region. I'm not sure if Mr. Carboja qualifies for South Region with his affiliation with the other organization that also does work in other regions of Alserino, but I'd leave that up to him to decide.
I have a point of clarification here. Because we have two candidates, and we're not going to do the secret ballots, can we just say Candidate One and Candidate Two?
We're just gonna say their name. We're all adults. They're adults, they know that they may not get a seat. Nobody needs to be secretive here. We're gonna go ahead and take a vote. Michelle, when you call your name.
Question real quick to them. Pacheco could vote, correct? It's not a funding item, and I know he hasn't done that.
Yeah, oh, he voted. He can vote.
Okay. So, I will call your name, and you're gonna tell me Troy or Anthony. Troy, you don't have to say the last name, but it's Troy Carboja, or Anthony Manzano. When I call your name, you're gonna tell me which of the two you want to vote for. Do you want to vote for the first gentleman that spoke Troy, or the second gentleman that spoke, which is Anthony? Okay? Marlene Fonseca, Troy. Michelle Corzantes, Anthony. Ruben Chavez.
Troy.
Cynthia Sandoval. Angela Duarte. Hugo Pacheco.
Anthony.
Yoli Garcia.
Troy.
Victor Ayala.
Anthony.
Manuel Chacon.
Anthony.
Tom Williams.
Anthony.
Agi.
Oh, Agi Rodriguez.
Anthony.
Mr. Manzano, come up here and take your seat, please. Thank you, Mr. Carboja.
The vote is Anthony eight, Troy three.
Moving on, is there anybody here to fill the South Region? Okay, we're moving on. If there's no opposition from the board, I'd like to move item 10 up to be heard next for the MPG application. We have a number of applicants here.
Point of order, here. For the South Region, it's a vacancy now, right?
Yes.
Okay, the gentleman that spoke the first time for the nomination we just had, he's available. He can be asked if he's interested.
Yes, he is, ask him.
He absolutely can. Everybody can.
Does Aslan Athletics service, the service is all of Alserino, right?
Yes.
So, technically, if he did want to run for the South Region, he can.
Yes, I would definitely fill that position if I was needed to do that.
Is there anybody else here to fill the South Region? Again?
I nominate him.
Okay, we've already heard him. You guys have already asked the questions. He's been nominated. Let's take a vote, Michelle.
Marlene Fonseca.
Yes.
Michelle Corzantes, yes. Anthony Manzano.
Is it to go on South?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Yes.
Cynthia, I'm sorry, Ruben Chavez.
Absolutely, yes.
Cynthia Sandoval. Angela Duarte.
Yes.
Hugo Pacheco.
Yes.
Yoli Garcia.
Yes.
Victor Ayala.
Yes.
Manuel Chacon.
Yes.
Tom Williams.
Yes.
Agi Rodriguez.
Yes.
Talking out of order, it looks good to be unanimous at the end.
Wow.
Thank you. Please take your seats, Mr. Manzano. Mr. Manzano, for the new board members, aside from Agi, I'm not considering him a new board member. He's had the funding training. Anybody else who hasn't in the last two years is not eligible to vote on these MPG applications? I believe that's all three of you.
Madam Chair, I have the list here, who's updated and who hasn't. If you'd like to see it, they give it to us every month.
Is either Mr. Manzano, Mr. Pacheco?
No, Manzano's not here, Pacheco's not here, and neither is Troy.
No, I know, but Agi is. Right, that's what we just said. Thank you.
Can we have discussion on moving the ad number?
Well...
I think Ruben expired. Hold on.
Checking to see if Ruben has expired.
No, Ruben hasn't.
I think Ruben has expired, yeah.
Funding?
How did I expire?
His ethics training expired September 3, 2015, and this was emailed this month. This was emailed to all of us, so it's not like, they just emailed it to me. They emailed it to the entire board. So, his ethics training expired. He took the funding certification November 19, 2014. Funding is still valid, but the ethics is expired as of September 3.
Is there anybody else? Okay, we're gonna, while I look at this list, we're gonna, I'm gonna ask if there's no opposition that we...
There is.
Move item number 10 up. There is, yes, okay.
Opposition. I think we need to review the budget to know exactly how much funds we have to allocate for the MPG's. So, I would suggest that we first...
Okay, you already stated that you're opposing. It's not discussion, so we can't move it up if anybody's opposing, so... Unless there's a motion made to move it up, then we can have discussion.
We can, we can make a motion?
We can make a motion, but then we can open it up for discussion, but I was just asking for no opposition to move it up.
We have opposition.
We do have opposition. No, but we do have opposition, so if somebody does want to make a motion, then we can open it up to vote.
I make the motion, Madam President. Point of order, I make the motion on item number 10. If we move up that, and so we can discuss it now, because of the length of other things, we might just run out of time.
A second.
Ten seconds.
Discussion?
So, you don't like it, you won't know, which is fine.
Okay, we have a second. We have a motion, and we'll go up item 10 in a second by Yoli. And so, it's opened up to public comment. Any public comment? I'm hearing item 10. Mr. Johnson, step forward. Speaking on the moving only, please.
Good evening, neighborhood council members, committee members, stakeholders. One of the important things here at Asper Tain is the... One of the important things here at Asper Tan is that you have some events that have taken place in the last few days. And I definitely hope that there is a review of the fiscal state of the board before moving forward. And we know one of the rules, one of the charter rules is that we work on outreach. And there's been some issues that have taken place in the community, like they were funding. It should be ascertained, whether it's federal or state, it's a way to take a place for their funding. It should also be dictated, and that's why I think it would be moved to have an updated accounting of the status of the funds for the Neighborhood Council. Thank you.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. Okay. Is there any other public comment regarding moving the item up? Board comment? Board comment?
Go ahead. I think we need to relocate that budget. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I called you, Anthony. Sorry.
I would say that we first review the budget, so we know how much funds we have, where the funds are. We need to look at the budget before we start talking about disposing of funds. So I would ask the board to please look... I'm not saying we can't renew MPG's, but let's look at the budget and see how much money we have. This is almost in the main. Let's not move the item, and let's focus on the budget first.
I feel like it would be beneficial to move the item only because the stakeholders were led to believe, and the applicants were led to believe that there's $10,000 in the MPG fund. They're here. We're gonna... If we take a vote and reduce it to 2,500, it's really unfair for them. Why would they even have to come if that were the case? So I feel like it should be heard first. Anybody else? Anybody? Board members to my right on moving item only?
This item has been on the agenda for the last month, and it should be heard first. Because in reality, we need to see exactly how much money each committee has spent. So we... I mean, budget and finance broke it down for the board, so you guys can see where we're at. And it's pretty accurate up to November. And we can't, I mean, we can't just assume and say, "Okay, yeah, we have a lot of money to give out," which we really don't. We don't... Elections is coming up, and Dunn has said that election is a priority right now.
Anthony?
Thank you. I may not be able to follow the actual action item. I wouldn't be able to enter discussion. And this subject matter, which is moving items out of order. Looking... Reviewing the agenda, item number seven indicates that they're gonna be discussing the approval of the recommendations for the year but 2015, 2016, which still needs to be budget allocation. It is proper that we would handle and conduct Neighborhood Council business first, make sure that our bookkeeping and records are accounted for, and then we could go along with having approval for dispersals. Thank you.
Thank you. Victor?
Yes, I agree with the previous speakers that we need to look at this budget first. We need to look at what money we have and what money we don't have before we make any decisions to fund everything. Because we can't make any recommendation to fund anything if we don't know how much money we have. So I would like not to take this out of order, but to, before we look at the budget first.
Thank you. Next, anybody else? Yoli?
Yes, so I'm looking at our agenda, and on the back page is the approved budget that we have due 22nd, 2015. I'm looking at this budget, the allocations that the board approved, just as mentioned earlier by the president. MPG was allocated $10,000. And, you know, looking at this, we know where we have money, what like items. And if we look at the previous pages, the proposed budget that budget and finance came expecting recommendation of, I think that we can go ahead and move the item up because we have an idea of what money we have. And based on how we vote on the MPG's, we can then make a reference to the recommendations made by the committee.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Pacheco?
Under parliamentary procedure, there's such a thing called the orders of the day. And when you're doing an agenda, you should discuss old business first. The problem that I've had with this particular type of saying that we had this all this year and a half is all these special and emergency meetings, things being moved up because supposedly they're more priority than others. If you really wanna function, if we really wanna function like proper organization, we look towards parliamentary procedure, therefore, unless this is absolute necessity, you don't keep moving items up. It's disrespectful for the people that have been waiting for a while. And the idea that led to believe brings the question, who led them to believe something that may not have been accurate? So led to believe is no reason, no cause to try to change parliamentary procedure. Thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and take a vote. And we have public comment. Bring it up.
We didn't get up fast enough.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and take a vote on moving the item up, and all board members are able to vote. This is not a funding item. Go ahead, Michelle, please. Actually, bring your hands.
Okay, all in favor to move item number 10, MPG applications to be reviewed and discussed? Please raise your hands. If you agree, yes. So that's one, two, three, four. Four yeses. Opposed, no's. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and myself, nine. Abstained? Any abstained? No abstained. Four, nine, zero. Motion does not pass.
Okay, we're going back to item number six.
I would like to make a motion to move the budget out of order, so we can address the budget before our time runs out. That would be item number seven. You seconded it, Jim?
Public comment? Moving another item up? Board comment? I'm gonna say, let's get through item six. We need a recording secretary. It's gonna take three minutes. And then we'll be on item number seven. We just got an extra on parliamentary procedure and why it's not good practice to move some of the items up. I understand. I'm making my comment. I'm a board member.
Are you done?
No. Yes, I'm done.
I'll make my other comment. So in order for us to review the MPG's tonight, we have to look at the budget to know how much funds we have. So I suggest we move this item out of order. Let's review it, so that we can focus on the MPG's.
To my right?
I agree.
With what?
Exactly. We need to look at this and move this up.
With Angela's comments? Okay. Anybody else?
I disagree.
With?
With moving up the item. And if we're gonna stick to the order, then let's just stick to the order of the vote.
Okay, let's take a vote. We're voting on moving item number seven up to be heard over item number six. All in favor, raise your hand.
Item number seven, right, to hear number seven...
Now.
To move number seven out of order. I'm sorry, to move number seven out of order, right? So that's to hear the budget right now. I'm sorry.
To hear item number seven.
Yeah.
That's the budget, reallocation.
So all in favor to move to hear the budget right now, which is item number seven, reallocate the budget? Please raise your hand. All in favor? One, two, three, and myself, four. All opposed? No's? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, no's. Motion does not pass.
Abstentions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
One abstention, two of them.
Thank you. We're moving on. We're proceeding with item number six. This was actually to announce the resignation of four directors that we filled the seats prior. That was Augustine, who in fact didn't submit in writing a resignation to me. West Region Director resigned, Luisana Valdez. She was also the recording secretary. So at this point, we do need to appoint a recording secretary. The recording secretary is responsible for taking minutes at every meeting and having them typed up prior to the next meeting. Also responsible for what states nearby has a number of things, including some record keeping duties and keeping the files as far as attendance goes. And so at this point, do we have anybody who would like to nominate themselves as recording secretary?
Chair, can I nominate someone, or you wanna see who self-nominate?
I just... I might not ask if anyone wants to nominate themselves. My next question will be, does anybody wanna nominate anybody else? We're not doing public comment right now. Mr. Johnson?
Actually, a point of order, if we are selecting a executive body position, the stakeholders also have a right to vote on it.
We know that. We're not voting yet. We know that the stakeholders can vote. Can... Anthony, are you still nominating yourself?
No, actually, I'm pretty much gonna agree with the stakeholder. But as a point of order, it indicates here that Luisana Valdez resigned on November 12, 2015. That means the recording seat vacancy opened November 12, 2015. Because the stakeholders are eligible to vote for the officers, I would ask that we table this item so that it can be properly announced, because we haven't even had 30 days from this date to announce that we're gonna be filling a recording secretary seat. Yes, it's on this agenda, but the date indicates when the seat was released. And I think it's just appropriate that we allow the stakeholders to participate in a regular general board meeting. And I'd ask that we make a motion for this item to be tabled until January.
Is it on? It is in there. Under executive officers, stakeholders can vote. We are watching to table the item until January, made by Anthony and suggested by Victor. Is there any public comment regarding this? Board comment? Angela? Emma? Cynthia? Sorry.
Yes, I don't think that we should table it. It's been out for the last three months that there weren't gonna be vacancies coming up. I know one personally, I did put that on Facebook to recruit and nominate people from the community. I see this audience is getting smaller and smaller, and I think that whoever is in this room right now is pretty much a representation for our region, so let's just move the order.
Yoli, nominate Anthony. Thank you. Yoli?
It's a special meeting. We fill vacancies for the regions in a special meeting, so I don't see why we would not fill a vacancy for the recording secretary. I think we should go ahead and move forward. I think board members, at least newly elected board members, talked about making this board vote, and having a recording secretary is essential, so I think we should move forward. So I oppose the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco?
I have... Did my head... Anyway. I hope that we do take care of this today, if we filled all these vacancies, even with some controversy of the vacancies for board members. I think that this needs to be filled. A person's been nominated already for the position. I believe that person accepted the nomination. And since it is old business, and old business does have priority and precedence over anything. Okay, and this is old business, and also the bylaws, I think as the gentleman from Dunn was reading the bylaws, there's no set time in the bylaws, how long that has to be vacant to announce it, and this and that, and all that belonging. So we can take care of this right now. We should.
Mr. Pacheco?
Just a point of clarification on Page 13 of the bylaws. Section three, selection of officers be at the general meeting. Says at the general meeting, when the new board members are installed, all board members, directors, and all NC voting stakeholders present, shall vote to elect the five officers. Any tie vote will be decided by a second vote of the two highest vote carries. In the case of time, the board shall vote to break the tie. Now, being here speaks to the idea of a special. It talks about a general meeting. This is not a general meeting. So unless it specifically give that exception, it has to be held at a general meeting for a selection of officers. And I'm just asking for quorum clarification. That's all.
Thank you. It is a little confusing, because that's kind of like the brand new officers, it sounds like. I do have a comment to make, though. If we don't elect a recording secretary right now, we're not gonna have quorum at our next executive meeting, and so an agenda will be unable to be made for the general meeting following. Gama is no longer wanting to be on the executive committee. And Capricia has been removed, as you know. So right now, it's Michelle and I, and without quorum, we can't make them.
Again, one important clarification, if I may ask, the chair. Is that a communication from Gama enlightened?
It's gonna be announced at the next. He's come, and he's turned in all his equipment, and he's indicated that he doesn't wanna be on the executive committee anymore.
Okay, on the form here, it says here...
Please put the mic.
It says here in the form, in front. It says here, speaking of the general board...
This is special meeting of the general board.
So this is a general meeting referring to a meeting of the whole body of the whole board as opposed to a committee meeting. So this is considered a special general meeting as opposed to a regular general meeting. So this is a special general meeting of the board. The meetings that you hold on the first Wednesday of the month, I believe, those are your regular general meetings. So to the point that was raised on section three, item B, I was looking at that right now in the same place, that it does make it very specific in your bylaws, that it's a general meeting when the new board members are installed. Speaking reference, well, making reference, even though not fully specified, after the general meeting after an election. All board directors and all stakeholders will vote on the officers. So the point is well taken, that this is not a general meeting after an election. This is a special, a special meeting of the board. I don't see anywhere else in your bylaws where what happens at a special meeting. At this point, really, you know, I'm gonna leave it up to the board to determine, because I don't see any of the specification. So if the board, if you wanna take a strong pull or wanna take a vote as whether you, if you proceed with electing the officers tonight, you may decide as a board whether you want to allow the stakeholders to participate just to acknowledge what your bylaws say, or you may interpret what your bylaws say to be very explicit, that stakeholders can only vote at the general meeting after an election.
Can we make a motion to that?
We have a motion already on the table to table, and that's what we should be speaking on.
Would you clarify if we... Would you clarify if we... If the board decides not to fill this executive officer position, and it happens that there is no quorum for the executive board? What, who, or how would the agenda be...
In that case, there won't be no meeting Wednesday, the Sunday.
So will Dunn create an agenda for us, or there'll just be no meeting?
You guys did. She said the majority of the board called for the special meeting and requested those items. You guys did. According to Michelle, the majority of the board requested those items to be at a special meeting. Are you telling me you didn't?
No, I'm saying you revised it, didn't you?
No, I didn't revise it.
Oh, you did?
No. And then it was corrected, because I inadvertently did leave off the monthly expenditure report. Right? I inadvertently accidentally, that means left off the monthly expenditure report. Michelle brought it to my attention. I revised it to include it, because you guys, the majority, stated that you set the agenda.
Yeah, so you did revise it.
Yeah, so you did set the agenda, right? Okay, thank you. Michelle?
I'm... It's my turn, right? I haven't even spoken on this. I think we need to fill in the recording secretary, because I'm here with all kinds of filing forms and board vote forms, and we need... You know, I wanna nominate that, because we need a recording secretary tonight after our next executive meeting. When you and I need, we're not even gonna be able to meet, so...
Yes, thank you. We're not nominating right now, but we're discussing the tabling of the item. And you have two opportunities to speak, and I believe you spoke twice already.
Point of order, I can ask at almost any time, but point of order.
It's okay.
Point of order, to proceed to... From now on, let me know. I'm trying to find out, because I haven't really asked a specific question concerning... I'm asking about the procedure that takes place. Now, what I'm... My understanding is that the chair must make the ruling. The chair makes the ruling as to what the chair thinks is the right way to proceed. If at that point, one of us members does not like the chair's decision, we can challenge it and ask the board to change it. I would, at this point, as part of problematic procedure, ask that the chair make a decision based on what she thinks would be the proper thing to do at this point. Thank you.
If you're asking me, we appoint a recording secretary now. We have a number of board members. We will include stakeholder votes, just to be fair. And we need to appoint a recording secretary. This recording secretary is gonna have to come on watch too. This recording secretary is gonna have to come on, watch two videos now, sit down and do two full sets a minute, and why make it three? Let's get this done, we need quorum at our executive meeting. Is there any opposition to that? Then let's proceed, do we need, there's a motion on the table, though. Go ahead.
Understanding the importance and the need to have officers leaving our neighborhood council, and just hearing a moment ago that we may lose another officer, it may seem, may seem complicated if they wish to hold an executive committee for agenda setting, because we just found out that there may not be quorum. But guess what? That's all right. Because what happens is if there's no quorum at the executive committee meeting, because their objective is agenda setting. So there's no quorum. What you do is you take the last agenda that's already been approved, already been prepared, already been submitted, and it just carries over for the next month. So in reality, we don't even need another executive committee meeting to add more stuff, because we haven't even been able to get through this agenda. So I would still suggest that we table the item, only because of the date, 11/12, it hasn't even been one month, and the bylaws do indicate that the stakeholders are allowed to participate in this election of officers. So the idea that we have to have an executive quorum sometime before January, it's not mandatory, because this agenda will still automatically carry over. Point of order?
Okay.
And so, it's a question, because, and I need to ask, if the recording secretary has not officially resigned, and now we appoint a new recording secretary...
She resigned, she resigned.
Oh, okay.
She resigned, she resigned on November 12th.
Dismissed, dismissed.
She resigned from the board entirely.
Thank you for correcting.
Okay, so, no, we're gonna take a vote on tabling, we need to move on. Yes, it was on the December agenda to do this. We're gonna, we're gonna take a vote on tabling the item. Michelle, please.
Marín Conceca?
No.
Michelle Corantes, no. Anthony Manzano?
Yes.
Ruben Chávez?
Oh.
Cynthia Sandoval? Angela Duarte? Hugo Pacheco?
Well, exactly, by voting for, please, once again.
To table item number six, which is to fill in the vacancy of Elizana Valdez, recording secretary.
No.
Troy Carver Hall? Did I pronounce that right? I'm sorry.
Yes, you did, no.
Yoli García?
No.
Victor Yala?
Yes.
Manuel Chapón?
Yes.
Tom Williams?
Yes.
Agi Rodriguez? 4-9-0, motion does not pass to table item six.
Okay, so, Anthony, did you self-nominate yourself? Did you self-nominate? No, okay, Michelle, are you nominating Anthony?
Yes, I am, I nominated Anthony for recording secretary.
Is anybody else nominating themselves? The audience can't be recording secretaries. They just could vote on whoever's up for it. Anybody else nominating yourself, nominating anybody else? Okay, let's take a vote on whether or not we want Anthony Manzano to be our new recording secretary. All in favor?
Straight up, so we're gonna have a clear count, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Are you voting Anthony? Ten, are you voting for yourself? Oh, that's right. He's waiting, he's waiting.
Victor, you're out of order, that's one time. Yes, you are. You're out of order speaking, you're speaking out of order. If Anthony had a problem with the nomination, he would've spoke up, he's a big boy. You would've spoke up, right? Would you like to be, would you accept Michelle's nomination?
I would, I would.
Don't, don't do it for... So, okay, go ahead.
All in favor to have Anthony Manzano as the recording secretary? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Ten, yes, and how many no's?
That passed it.
Oh, obviously.
Anybody opposed to having Anthony? Extensions? Two?
Two.
Three extensions?
Who's the third one?
Tom Williams.
And who's the, it's Anthony and Tom.
And me too. Yoli?
Yoli, okay.
Can we just, for the record, get the number of stakeholders that are approving, that would like to see Anthony as a recording secretary? One, two, three, okay, three stakeholders. Is there any opposition from the stakeholders? Can you raise your hand if you oppose having Anthony as recording secretary? Okay, Anthony as a recording secretary, you'll have, please start getting the notes from now on, from this point forward, and you can use the video from this prior, also from last past meeting. Thank you, let's move on. Item number seven is discussion on possible action that LA 32 NC approved that recommended fiscal year 1516 budget. The reallocation may include transferring funds into committees by February 19th, 2016, if the committee funds are not used by the date. The unused funds will be reallocated into other committees for neighborhood council needs. This was made by the Budget and Finance Committee. And the wording is a little confusing. I didn't change it, because they submitted it in writing, and I didn't want any issues, but... What they're trying to say is that these funds, funds have been allocated into each committee. If the committees don't use those funds by February 19th, then we'll have the option of moving them into other places where they're needed. Michelle, did you wanna speak on your motion? Your reallocation?
Oh, yes. We, the Budget and Finance, wanna recommend this to our, to our fellow colleagues, so they can... We went by event expense, and we broke it down into each committee, so each committee has an amount to spend. So this kinda gives us, chair and members, to wanna be part of the committee, not just all in one, all in one category. Was a little bit harder to see, because it almost seemed like it was only always membership and outreach doing so much. So we wanted to have other committees have an amount, we allocated 1,000 to each. You will see that, you will see that outreach has a little bit more, because they were big amount expenses that were made, because we were doing co-sponsoring. Gama and I were doing a lot of events with a lot of organizations. So you, we have to put that amount there. So it's not even like you can say, well, why don't you put less for membership and outreach? We can't, we can't put less for membership and outreach, because that's how much we have spent, which is in the red, 6,780 and 76 cents. Executive committee, we put 487, we have only expensed 133 and 11 cents, which was for the November 7th with Jimmy Gomez, coffee with an elective. Sports and Rec, 25, 2,563. And of course, their balance is gonna change after we deduct the amount that we gave to them, which was approved, and they already got their check. We're waiting for it to reflect on the bank account, that's why we haven't taken it out of here. Arts and Culture, 2,500, we put the Thanksgiving dinner out of this category, which is 899 and 90 cents. There was no committee assigned to it, but we were looking through the bylaws to see which committee kinda fits best to it, and I believe that it falls in that category. So we put it there, so with that being said, their balance is 1,600. Membership, 7,000, and they only have 219 left, which really, isn't really much, so we're hoping the rest of the committees can, can start on doing some co-sponsoring. Fitification, 1,000, 734 was spent, so there's 245 left. Public safety, 1,000, they haven't made no event or expenses. Education committee, no event or expenses. Ad hoc senior committee, 1,000. Business economic, business economic is 250. Capricha still needs to purchase those postage that we approved, so that's why we reflected that 250, because we did approve that amount, so I make sure we put it there. Meeting hospitality, 600, we have expensed 59, minus the 60 for the December, which hasn't reflected there yet, because this, this was obviously printed before December. And wet maintenance is there, the monthly fee is already allocated, 2,100. So as you can see, it's a little bit hard to kinda say, well, take this away from the committees and give it to MPG's and community improvement, so then, so then we wouldn't do nothing no more for the rest of the year. Then we won't be able to do anything, no committees or anything no more. So this gives us an opportunity to go forth and continue participating in the committee, in the community. Then there's the Community Improvement Project, which is 543, 543. And we did allocate to the Neighborhood Purpose Grant, 2,500. 500, which was already for the karate program, which... I'm not sure we should even put that one there, because the karate program was a park transfer, so I don't know if that should go in that category.
Technically, there are no internal departmental transfers anymore, so it would've been considered either an outreach or something in the other categories.
I'm sorry, I should've told you guys. That is Kathleen, she's one of the main points that I speak to all the time, that I'm constantly on the phone emailing, and she's guiding me throughout this entire process as the treasurer. So would we put it up in an event category, maybe for sports and rec, or...
Yeah, if it's, if it's essentially going to be a community improvement project, like, it sounds like it's a community improvement project, you would allocate it in community improvement.
Okay.
If it was for an event that was being held at, say, Wreckin' Park or some other sort of city facility, since the neighborhood councils now have a checking account system, we don't go through the old financial management system, there's no way to essentially transfer the funds from one apartment fund to another. So that's just the difference, it's just the way that it's transferred. It would probably be under community improvement.
Okay, okay, yeah, because we, it was, it was for equipment for the karate, the karate program, and sponsorship for, for families in need that can't afford the program.
And that's straight to department, correct?
Yes. Because now we don't go straight to department, my understanding, we're paying them directly, correct?
Yes, correct.
Yes, okay. So somebody's gonna have to amend that as well, since we're here. Election outreach expense, 10,000. It is my understanding Jay Handler, who is in charge of elections at Empower LA, has made it point clear that elections is a priority for us this year, because we need to get people in these seats to represent us for the following election, for the following year to come. So this is why we recommend 10,000 in election outreach expense. The former board spent about 16,000 on election, so this is not even close to what we're asking from the former board, but the former board did spend a bigger amount than this. So, this is, at the bottom, you'll see 42,000. This is including already the, that 5,000 that the city councils approved for each neighborhood council. So how much has been spent? 70,789 and 13 cents, and what is the balance? 24,210 and 59 cents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, is anybody prepared to move this motion? Okay, we're gonna open it up to public comment.
I wanna say thank you very much for the presentation. I think this is a great example of communicating this information to the stakeholders. One thing I wanna add here, I think to the path of being on this board, budgets are, are flexible document. A lot of times in the old county days, you know, you'd get a pencil and an eraser, because sometimes you have unique situations that popped up. One thing I wanna make clear, that my information to the board, we recently had a fatal shooting, a senseless shooting of a individual, of a mercury, this last weekend. And I would be moved at this board in reviewing its current finances. Be aside a, what you wanna call a server contingency fund for outreach, because I think in situations like this, where we have issues involving gang violence in our community, and we need to maybe have a town hall meeting to discuss these situations, we need to have something that we can fall back on in this type of situation. This is a really neat situation to have, that is a tragic situation, but I think us as a, as a community, sometimes we need to have the resource at hand to handle these situations when they arise. So I hope you look at those as consideration to this people, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go on.
Good evening, everyone. My concern with the draft as a, as a draft is that the MPG's were allowed to come in and submit their MPG's under the premises that there was still more funding available, and the MPG's were submitted before November 30th, because of the cutoff date that we were given. So if, anything, I would consider that this isn't, this isn't just when the community's told one thing, and there's this amount of money available, and then present this draft prior to having given the opportunity to those MPG's under that money that was still available to come and present. So I would just like to make note that the MPG's seems to be extremely low in consideration for everything that goes on within this community, and all of the other organizations that would still be able to come and request funding, thank you.
Thank you, any other public comment? Board comment? Board? Agi? Yes, yes, go ahead, Mr. Williams, Tom.
Okay, my biggest concern is right now on item... Tom, you might? We don't have enough money here.
We can interview Tom.
Hello, hello, hello? Okay, the basic issue is neighborhood purpose grant. Is there enough money in this grant to fund the three projects that we have already? That we are still trying to consider, and have been on the agenda for a while? No. 2,500 versus 10,000. So we have a basic problem there. Approval of this modification will mean that, A, we can't consider the neighborhood purpose grants that are old business, that's one thing. There's also a matter that, on Saturday, there was a LANK meeting in San Pablo, and they said that $6,000 is not enough to do an election, because of the outreach element. Now, we have 10,000 for election, which they would say is better than six. But there's also a matter that we have outreach, and there's 9,000 total in the budget there. So, item 200. So, we have, might say, election outreach and outreach. Then where is the other one? There's nothing, there's nothing left in community improvement. We have 3,000 left in office and equipment. So, might say, we're getting pretty close as to actual money available. Transferring any of this over to more event expenses would be a problem. We've already spent 10,000 on events, and there's allocations for another 9,000. So my biggest concern is, do we have enough money in the neighborhood purpose grants to do virtually anything? Myself, I would prefer that all, might say, assignments of costs for any committee and/or for any project be restricted to 10,000, and sorry, to $1,000, with a two-thirds board of vote, or 500 be the maximum extent, so that the stakeholders can organize as to how much they expect. We have costs estimated at 6,000, $3,000, 500, and for our neighborhood councils, I think that's far too large amount to put into a single neighborhood of grant. So, but we need to have clarification to give the stakeholders as to what's gonna happen in the next four months.
Angela, anything?
Can you come back to me and gather my thoughts, 'cause I have a step off for a second.
Agi, oh, you can, oh, no, you can, anything?
My loss.
Oh, Mr. Pacheco? Oh, Mr. Tickle?
Yep, I was looking at the figures and I agree with, with, uh, with Tom there. And, uh, I, I think that, uh, you've, you've spent all this money in parade. Something is passing, like parade. Parade's gone and so is the money. What have you got your show for it?
We're talking about the budget.
You see what I'm saying? You see, I'm trying to say. I, I, we have to, we have to watch the money. We have to merge it or whatever comes up. And I, I agree that we should kind of take our pockets up for right now.
Yoli? Okay. You guys are giving me a really hard budget to, to put on a kite because of what compared to what you spent last year. But, um, I don't know. And, and I'm not really understanding why the turkeys come out of there, but that's okay. Also, the Neighborhood Purpose Grant, that five hundred, wasn't that last, last fiscal year that we voted? And if we voted it as an MPG, I think it, it should stay in the MPG. I mean, if they went through the MPG process, we voted on it that way. So I understand that importance with elections. And I'm thinking, maybe we could shave a thousand dollars off of them? That's it. Anthony?
Um, just being a recently seated board member and not having all this pertinent information, um, I don't know how much input I'm gonna be able to give at this discussion, but it would be very brief. As long as this is reviewed by the Budget and Finance Committee, and that's the recommendation that they give, I support it.
Uh, Victor?
Oh, is that show?
Is that work?
Uh, if we look at our budget that we have right now, which is this one right here, nine thousand, five hundred for MPG. Minus three thousand of bicentennial for the Christmas tree equals six thousand, five hundred. Minus five thousand for the parade for bicentennial equals one thousand, five hundred. Minus three thousand for ASI Cal State equals negative one thousand, five hundred. So if we provide to them, because they're here, we will be on negative and we have no election money.
Victor?
I call for a question?
Everybody hasn't had an opportunity to see it. You can't yet. Everyone has to at least have one opportunity to see it.
Okay, just, just to verify. I understand this parliamentary process, there's rubbish, water, and all that stuff. That's, we, just to verify, this is a point that we made, and they're made every, every council meeting. They, they don't fully, completely apply all the time to neighborhood councils. Neighborhood councils are government agencies. Okay, they're not private organizations that abide a hundred percent by those rubbish, water, and water. Those apply more definitely to, uh, your, you know, private clubs, private organizations. One thing they need to make sure of here is to make sure that everyone's voice gets heard or at least has the opportunity to be heard. I, I do see a motion, well, that's a motion, I suppose, to, for the question. Uh, you may ask as word president if, if, uh, the board would like to proceed to the motion, understanding that the remaining board members would not have an opportunity to come.
This could be done in other ways.
So, yeah, so, but just, just to, just to reiterate that. Cause I, I don't want the board and the public to walk away from the meeting feeling that, um, you know, there's very, there are rules and I respect that. But keep in mind that it, it does challenge the neighborhood councils anywhere in the city. That the, the heavy to follow that. What applies to private organization, which we are now, we're a government agency. We need to make sure that everyone's voice gets heard. So I, I just wanted to, uh, understand that, that if the board was to proceed with the motion to call for the question, the rest of the board members would not have been heard. And I asked the question, has the public been heard? And yes, it was. So you would be covered with that. The Brown Act requires that the public be heard before the board takes any motion. So. Want a clarification on this? Okay, first of all, the call for the question is a separate vote. And that is whether or not the entire board wants to stop the discussion at that point. That's what and go for the vote. So that's one, at least asking for at this point. It does have to get a second vote. And everything stops, we go ahead and we vote whether or not we want to end the discussion at that point. Okay, so I'm just trying to get that opportunity to understand that that doesn't call, call for the question is not what most people think. We stop, let's vote. No, it's whether or not you want to stop the discussion. And we all decide. And, and so I'm just trying to.
But it does have to be seconded and nobody has seconded it. Yeah?
And there's only four of us left, yes.
Is anybody seconding his request? Okay, Cynthia?
I was at the last Budget and Finance meeting and I am looking at the, uh, draft budget here because of course we do know that we can reallocate and move money around. We have a education committee with a thousand dollars sitting in there. And there is no education committee movement. There hasn't been any meetings because our chairperson resigned. So there's a thousand dollars there. Um, I know that the public safety has been asking for some type of money as well. But whatever money is not there, maybe they can afford to give five hundred dollars so that we can move that five hundred dollars. We won't have anything for elections, but we did put a process for MPG's. And I feel that we need to follow that process. We gave them the idea to come by this date. And if we don't do it, then we, we are not doing compliance with what we said we do.
We're on this side.
Oh, okay. Uh, you know, uh, the parade, any parade, but here in LA thirty-two and part of, uh, LA nine-zero-zero-three-one, which is in Rose Hills, part of the LA thirty-two M.C.
On the budget?
Yes, it's on the budget, that's for a man. You know, this money, the spend for the parade is well spent. Yes, the parade's gone and where's the money? It costs a lot to see the parade and the community. This particular activity is the largest gathering of Alserenians. All the communities within Alsereno umbrella come. And people from outside of, uh, the LA thirty-two also come to view the parade. And so they desperately need that money because it costs more than five thousand to run that parade. They need every penny. And also for the Christmas, uh, they've been doing that for years. And it's all for the Alserenians benefit of.
The reallocation, that's all we're speaking on right now.
So we need that money to please, I, I urge the, the board here to vote for this thing so we can have the money for the parade and the Christmas.
Yoli?
Yes, um, my thinking is more along Cynthia, which you mentioned. We did, um, do outreach for the MPG process. And I do think that the MPG amount, it would benef, it would benefit the community to increase it. Now, I don't, that doesn't mean that we are going to approve all the MPG applications and that we're gonna approve the amounts that they're requesting. But I do think that we should allow, we should allocate more money in the MPG's. And then when we listen to the MPG applications, then we have, that money is there. If we choose to fund and have us to fund. And if not, we can be allocating that money elsewhere. Um, education committee, we can pull money from there. And, um, if, if, you know, we could cut maybe some of the people in the committees, then that's money that we can move also. So I would recommend, um, moving more money to MPG.
So the last two board members all are eligible, are eligible to vote. You can make comments.
You can make a comment though.
Yes, you can. So Troy, are you, do you have any?
No, I will comment.
Mr. Tickle?
You know, first of all, whenever I hear the name Jay Handler, and the way he came in here to consult us the last time, it's awful. That, that gentleman shouldn't be anywhere near that, in my opinion. So I don't even respect what he has to say. And then he, and you can tell to his face, I'll tell it to his face myself.
Okay, allocation, please.
And, well, because the idea is that somehow he's an expert as to what we should be spending on our election. And when I start looking at percentages here, and I looked at the election as twenty-three-point-eight-one percent, that's almost a quarter of all of our budget. Then I asked myself over and over again, based on the city charter, what is the purpose of the neighborhood council? And I've asked this over and over and over again. Our purpose is to be an advisory board to the council office. So that any outreach program, anything we do out there is to be able to get communications from the stakeholders, from the community, to be able to transfer that information to the council as to what the needs are of the community. And whatever questions they ask. Then, if we had a respectful council person, that council person would communicate to us what they would be doing. Now, hold on, are you good? Let me finish. So that every one of these items that are here should be for that purpose. It isn't a question, we're not a funding source for community activities. We're supposed to be an advisory board. When we finally get that in our heads, then we will be able to do our job. So one of the things I keep going back and forth is on percentages. And I keep asking myself, wait a minute, if I was a nonprofit using these percentages and I was gonna spend twenty-five percent just so that I could get my job back, how many of you people would contribute to that? Thank you.
Angela?
Okay, my last comment is, um, Budget and Finance Committee met this time trying to draft this for us, for us to see if allocation and moving funds from other committees, just because we haven't presented, Public Safety is co-sponsoring several events coming up next year. So we will need those funds. Um, in addition to the election, we're on the elections committee. It has been advised to us to spend as much as we can on, uh, definitely ten thousand. They're gonna make this meeting. We have forty-two thousand stakeholders in our community to reach out to. So election was really important. And they strongly advised us to move the money and the funds needed there. In regards to the MPG's, we still have some funds available where we can co-sponsor events with MPG's that are wanting to. So I suggest that we approve this budget as presented respectfully from the Budget and Finance Committee who took the time to make.
I'd like to clarify that although, um, you know, Michelle stated that if we approved all of them, we'd be negative. But that's not, the point is that, I mean, just to give the opportunity to hear them, we may not approve, uh, one, some of them may not even qualify for MPG's. They may be voted down. But the fact being that they came here assuming that there was that amount of money to work with, to me seems a little unfair. Does anybody else have a second comment? Anyone who's?
Just to add to your comment, um, we can't assume how much money the budget is gonna have. So if the changes always happen, so MPG's that are used to coming over and asking the neighborhood council for funds should be aware that there is that possibility and may not be funded. So.
Okay, are you ready to move?
No, 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 I have a comment. I have a, uh, amendment to, uh, to this motion. Okay, and it's to move the nineteen thousand. I need a little help, I was asking.
Out of outreach, the, the subtotal is nineteen thousand, five hundred and forty cents. So Mr. Travis would like to amend it to sixteen thousand, five hundred and forty cents. And in the four-hundred block, uh, the subtotal is two thousand, five hundred. We would like to amend it to six thousand, five hundred dollars. And in the election outreach expense, the subtotal is ten thousand. So amend it to nine thousand dollars.
There is my amendment, uh, motion.
I think we're trying to, trying to understand. The very first one you said was the nineteen thousand under website, under what?
On, on the outreach, the whole block, the subtotal sixteen thousand, five hundred.
Oh, I see, I see, I see.
Okay. And then I guess right now we would have to adjust in the other ones.
We'll determine where it goes after.
And then in the Neighborhood Purpose Grant, six thousand, five hundred. And in the election outreach, nine thousand.
Okay, I'll second the motion because I want to have discussion of it.
Under parliamentary procedure, the chair should, for clarification purposes, restate what the motion is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still a little bit confused. All right, I'm sorry, Yoli, you're just kind of.
So the nineteen thousand, five hundred and forty cents, he's reducing it by three thousand?
Okay, but you understand that that's the total, the balance is over to the parade? Okay.
So if not, if, if the board, my recommendation would be if the board approves this amendment, that Budget and Finance then be allocates within that block.
Oh, okay. So we'll take, pull three thousand from within the committees and figure out where the, because that's website maintenance and that's a set amount.
I'm, I think for us to be going line by line right now, it's, it's a task.
Okay, you're right. Three thousand there, and then you're saying six thousand, five hundred onto MPG's?
Yes, so increase by four.
And nine thousand dollars on, uh, elections.
So you're getting three thousand from outreach and one thousand from elections so that it would increase MPG's by four thousand.
And make it sixty-five hundred. Okay, so the motion is, um, to reallocate, reducing the out, category two-hundred outreach by three thousand, later determining where the three thousand is gonna come from in each of those subcategories. And, um, reducing the election outreach expense by one thousand, making it nine thousand. Putting both of those into Neighborhood Purpose Grants, which would bring the total to six thousand, five hundred, a balance of six thousand.
That's correct.
And it's been seconded by Cynthia. And so now it's open to public comment. Is there any public comment? Board comment? I don't agree. I don't, oh, sorry, Tom. What?
Elections are critical for. Elections are critical for next year. We need that money in the election side because it's going to be a very different group, maybe next year. There's a lot of things that are going on right now. Vote by mail, vote by email, vote by the computer in this room and this building. So we have some opportunities to outreach. Again, the main thing is to get more people to vote for neighborhood councils, i.e. participate. That costs money. And might I say, ten thousand is a lot better than nine thousand. And I'm quite concerned about the three items in the Neighborhood Purpose Grants. Six thousand, five hundred, is that enough? Have the, have the proponents accepted those numbers? I don't know. Uh, five thousand dollars is a lot of money. And what portion of that's going to go for the parade versus the Christmas tree versus Dominican Republic's stadium and company? So, uh, I will vote against it.
Angela? Yeah, I, I oppose this change as well. Um, we can't take from the committees, as I said, we have, Public Safety has some events coming up. So it's important to keep it within Public Safety. Um, and in regards to the elections, again, we were advised it's anywhere between, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this, Michelle, between twelve and I think sixteen thousand or fifteen thousand, which Empower L.A. told us is, is recommendable. Ten thousand is not even close, it's just there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Michelle?
For the October meeting, the board and the community got hysterical because I tried doing what Yoli did. I tried to rearrange it and quickly tried to accommodate the budget. And, and everyone here, all of you, my fellow colleagues said, oh, no, 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 no. Take it back to the committee. And nobody wanted to vote on it in October. So we took it back to the committee and we brought it to you in November. It didn't get heard. And now we're here in December, we're back to moving it again. But yet me, Yoli, and Ruben sat there and we approved this. And I'm looking at them both and they said, oh, yes, Michelle, that is perfect, that sounds great. And now it changes. So I don't understand that. But I don't think we should take that from any other committee because they will be a chair in education committee, someone. We obviously just got Troy, Hugo, Anthony on board. And I'm pretty sure they're gonna want to chair that. And they can use that thousand. You know, there's other beautification that still needs a chair. And I'm pretty sure they'll be able to use that as well. So I am not for this amendment, no.
Cynthia?
I'm just gonna go back to what I said. For the record, I'm not saying to move it around as a right this minute. I'm just saying that we put out a process and it was on the internet and it was on the website. And it was brought to everyone's attention that the MPG process was going to fall as such. By November thirtieth, you, uh, you need to bring in your paperwork. And they did that diligently. They did their homework, they did what they were supposed to do. Now, for us to deny them any type of help, whether it's three thousand, if they accept a thousand, five hundred, if it's seven hundred and fifty dollars, we need to hear these MPG's and go through the process, which is ten. which is tallies, asking the questions we asked the other NPGs that we've already awarded. We need to do this. So let's just stop with moving the budget and just listen to the NPGs.
I welcome for this thing to take place, that's why I made the amendment. Thank you, off the board, votes for it.
I understand if for members do not wanna make changes to the budget, did this go through the Budget and Finance Committee? It is a recommendation for the Budget and Finance. Now, I'm sorry, I lost my thought. That's one of the reasons why I wanted to move up the NPGs first, because if we moved up the NPGs, as the board, we could have decided to go through tallying them up and decide if we wanted to fund any of these NPGs, and if we wanted to fund them to reduce the amount if necessary, or decide. But now, we're doing the budget, because the board decided not to look at the NPGs first. So now, because of that, I think it's only fair to have the NPG applicants, give them an opportunity by increasing the NPG funds. It doesn't mean that we are gonna fund $6,500, but the money is there in the event that we choose to fund anything and the amount.
All right, so let's take a look at this amendment. Folks have been working on this budget, they've come up with these numbers. Our committees are requesting specific numbers, a lot less than what the NPGs, in many cases, are getting. The most important thing for us, number one priority, is our committees. And until you go back and ask our committees if that amount that they are allocated is good enough, then we kinda have to set aside the NPG. Then we have to be honest with the NPG, and not lead them to believe something that's not true. And say, "Folks, this is all the money we have, there is no more money." So based on that, and based on whether or not the particular program qualifies as an outreach program that's beneficial to us, then we can make a decision as to whether or not we can allocate some of that money to you. The fact that you turn an application does not give you the privilege nor the right to get any of the money. Your opinions, we still be able to review and say whether or not you can get any of the money, or even if your particular project has any outreach purpose for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we're prepared to take a vote on the amendment. And once again, I'll read what the amendment is. The motion was to remove $3,000 from category 200 outreach from various committees to be decided later, and move $1,000 out of election outreach expense placed both into neighborhood purpose grant category, bringing that total up to 6,500 total with a current balance of $6,000.
I have a quick question, who's seconded, just for record keeping?
Okay, the motion was made by Ruben and seconded by Cynthia. So let's take a roll call vote. Michelle, please, and only those eligible to vote. Oh, I'm sorry.
Highlight, yeah, highlight, it is the ones that are absent, and don't forget the ones that are ineligible. You do it, do the recording secretary. I'll do it if you want, but no, you're supposed to say the name on that, here you go. Take your time, don't rush, because this is important.
This is gonna be true. Approve the amendment, the amendment was read by the president chair. All those in favor, actually, D. Marín Fonseca?
Yeah, you gotta remember.
Yeah, I'm going down by this.
Roll call.
Yes. Okay, Marín Fonseca?
Yes.
Michelle Corzentes?
No.
Myself, I am ineligible at this time. Ruben Chavez?
Yes.
Cynthia Sandoval?
Yes.
Angela Duarte?
No.
Hugo Pacheco?
Ineligible.
Troy Carvahal?
Ineligible.
Yoli Garcia?
Yes.
Victor Ayala?
No.
Tom Williams?
No.
Manuel Chacon? Aki Rodriguez?
Just to correct you, Mr. Chavez, it's been determined that he's ineligible, I think.
I am eligible, I took that thing at Congress, at City Hall.
The funding changing?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I think the concern was his ethics, that ethics that expired.
It was the ethics change.
He needs both.
Yeah, remember, it's ethics and funding.
To be able to vote on funding items.
So he needs the other ones, so we can vote now?
Correct.
Ineligible for funding matters, because you need to redo the ethics.
Ethics.
It's every two years.
If I may clarify something, I know my name is showing that I have, it doesn't have a date or anything for the ethics, so when I went to do the funding training for the second amendment...
Can we get the count first?
I took the proof that I have taken with us.
Okay, what's the count of that?
For the amendment, that is three yes, five no, and five ineligible.
Okay, so the amendment doesn't pass, let's get back to the main motion. Let's get back to the main motion then, which is the original budget, the original draft budget as proposed. Okay, we're gonna go straight to the vote, because we've already discussed it. Yeah.
Yeah, motion for a second.
We've already had public comment on this item. Anthony, go ahead.
I need initially, okay. This will be for the reallocation of the budget as recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. Single tabulation vote, Marín Fonseca?
No.
What, I'm sorry, what is this for again?
Your original motion.
Okay, thank you.
This is going to be from the main motion.
Yeah, can you sit up here, so we don't, the rest of us understand?
Appreciate that.
Really, you're reading this motion?
We...
Did somebody read it?
The amendment, the amendment didn't pass, we're back to the original motion. Number seven, that LA 32 approves the recommended fiscal year 1516 budget. The reallocation may include transferring funds into committees by 2019-16. If the committee funds are not used by that date, the unused funds will be reallocated into other committees for neighborhood council needs.
Okay, ask for Marín Fonseca?
No.
Michelle Corzentes?
Yes.
Myself, Anthony Manzano, ineligible. Ruben Chavez is ineligible. Cynthia Sandoval?
Yes.
Angela Duarte?
Yeah.
Hugo Pacheco?
Ineligible.
Troy Carvahal?
Ineligible.
Yolanda Garcia?
Yes.
Victor Junayala?
Yes.
Tom Williams?
Yes.
Manuel Chacon?
Yes.
Aki Rodriguez?
Yes.
Yes, Cynthia's ineligible, and he is eligible.
Did you call him ineligible last time? I think he's eligible.
What was your vote last time?
No.
And so, arguing this one? Hugo, yes, okay. We have a total of eight yes out of 14 members present, one no, five ineligible. Eight, one, five.
Motion passes. Okay, let's move on. We're moving on to item number eight. Discussion and possible action regarding reconsideration motion that was approved at the November 12, 2015 special meeting of the general board. The reconsideration is to add LA 32 NC, a co-sponsor, to the senior citizen center holiday event. Reads as and reads as follows. Motion that LA 32 NC co-sponsors with Alserino Senior Citizen Center for their holiday luncheon and dance on Thursday, December 17, 2015, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. LA 32 NC will provide funding up to $250 for the purchase of a holiday tree, either artificial or fire retardant, for the Alserino Senior Citizen Center. And this reconsideration was submitted by Ms. Corzentes via email, 11/21/2015. Did you wanna speak on it? Because I see a question straight ahead.
He's the chairman.
I know, but you made the reconsideration, so it's here that you will speak on it.
Reconsideration was, I asked, I was in favor of this, and I wanted to reconsider, because the, it needed to be co-sponsored, or it needed to be, if not co-sponsored, an NPG, and we had to come back and do a co-sponsored event, so we could purchase the tree. Other than that, it'd be a little bit more challenging to put it on the agenda, so we're here. So now, the park has a tree, and they put it here, that's the tree. And...
We got a tree!
They got a tree, so we're gonna say, okay, well, let's amend and do some decorations. They got decorations. So I asked the senior club floor, what do you need then? So I, she wants actually snacks, beverages, water bottles, coffee, creamers, Ziploc bags, foil paper, paper goods, whatever we can get them for the amount that was approved, because obviously they have a tree, and they already have holiday decorations. She did mention the food, but if Paquita would have to put us on their certificate of liability, and they may give me that information.
So are you withdrawing your reconsideration, or what?
No, I'm actually gonna amend that.
Because an amendment needs to be related, and that's a completely different thing.
It's just changing the, instead of a tree, it's gonna be different items that we're gonna fund. We're still gonna co-sponsor, we're just gonna fund, instead of a tree, it's going to be different items. Something like this.
Ornaments.
So instead of striking out, we will strike out after the, for the purpose of a holiday tree, either artificial or fire retardant, we will strike that out, and food will provide funding up to, my amendment would be, will provide funding up to 250 for beverages, paper goods, water bottles, snacks, coffee, creamers, Ziploc bags, and foil paper.
Can you state that slower? Beverages?
Oh, Anthony's taking minutes.
But when I read the motion, I need to read the motion.
Okay, okay.
Beverages?
Beverages, paper goods.
Not that slow.
Water bottles, snacks, coffee, creamer, Ziploc bags, foil paper. No, they already have ornaments, no. They didn't need them, they told me, she, Lot Lot told me.
Ziploc bags?
Ziploc bags, foil paper.
Foil paper.
Do you have a second on that?
That is my amendment.
Okay, so we need to take a vote on that amendment, which will now read. Motion that LA 32 NC co-sponsors with Alserino Senior Citizen Center for their holiday luncheon and dance on Thursday, December 17, 2015, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. LA 32 NC will provide funding up to $250 for the purchase of beverages, paper goods, water bottles, snacks, coffee, creamers, Ziploc bags, and foil paper. For the Alserino Senior Citizen Center. Public comment on the amendment only. Board comment? Mister, sorry, Tom?
One of the things that we didn't realize was that Recreation Center did have a tree, but they didn't tell anybody, that's what they had. So, might say, although...
Although we had the right intent, we didn't know what the resources were. But by having it, we got people to think about, "Oh, oh, I have a tree over here." And that helped. And a lot of it will be that sort of thing for here and other places. But where the senior committee is going after other fish in the pond, and there's a lot of them.
Thank you, anybody else have the amendment? Mister Pacheco?
Again, strictly for procedure and learning, how to do this properly, right? I'm not, I'm a senior in this one. The idea for reconsideration is for the winning side to be bringing up the issue again. So when, and this is a question now basically for the chair, and she may ask, Melvin, isn't the, we need to make a motion to reconsider, and then we make a motion to amend, is that correct? Is that my understanding? And I ask the chair for ruling on that, please, thank you.
We're gonna make, they're asking to amend the reconsideration. We first have to make, take a vote on that. We have to vote on whether or not we're gonna reconsider, and then we vote on the actual motion.
Yes, correct.
Anybody else speaking on the amendment? Okay.
But don't you supposed to speak on the reconsideration first?
We're gonna vote on the reconsideration first.
But we can't be talking about the amendment, we need to talk about the reconsideration first, and the public comment.
We...
First, whether or not we want to reconsider. I mean, she's waiting, get out there, ready, so... Now, we didn't send it to line three at least, man. Just ask real quickly, and see if we get done, if not, then we stand.
Because you guys, that's what you...
I'm saying you guys, you're out of order, okay? I'm out of order now.
You guys have the meeting at seven?
You're out of order.
No, I'm not out of order. Victor, the meeting was called for seven, period. Can we extend it, or we can't?
Uh, no, 9:30 is done.
Let's get this done. Let's vote on the reconsideration first, is there any public comment on the reconsideration? Board comment on the reconsideration? Okay, let's take a vote. For the...
Reconsiderance, that's just a reason.
We're taking a vote for the reconsideration, to reconsider the original motion regarding the tree at the senior citizen event. All in favor of reconsidering the original motion, raise your hand.
Is it a funding issue, Melvin?
The reconsideration?
Because there's funding.
Not the reconsideration itself, but when you get to vote, you know, on the other motion. However, just to advise the board, technically speaking, every motion that you vote on as a board should be a roll call vote. If there is a way for the minutemaker to keep track of how everyone is voting without doing an actual roll call vote, that's fine. But technically speaking, it should be a roll call vote, so that there's a record of how each member voted.
Marín Fonseca?
Ready?
Tere, senator. Michelle, yes. Anthony?
Yes.
Ruben?
Yes.
Cynthia? Angela? Hugo?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Yoli? Victor?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Manuel?
Yes.
Aki?
So I'd like to amend, I'd like to amend that...
Okay, we have, we're bringing the original motion back to the table, and you're gonna request to amend it again?
Yes.
To the same amendment that you requested prior?
Yes, that I told you.
Okay, so now, let's take a vote, is there public comment on the amendment? Board comment? Let's vote on the amendment, which would read, it would strike out holiday tree, and put in place beverage, paper goods, water bottles, snacks, coffee, creamers, Ziploc bags, and foil paper.
Marín Fonseca?
Yes.
Michelle? Yes. Anthony? Oh, ineligible. Ruben?
Yes.
Ineligible. Cynthia?
Yes.
Angela? Hugo?
Ineligible.
Troy?
Ineligible.
Yoli? Victor? Tom?
Yes.
Manuel?
Yes.
And Aki? Motion passes, 9:00.
Wait.
I'm sorry, 9:00, yeah. Well, we never read it.
That was just to amend it, now we have to vote on it.
Now we have to approve it, right?
Now we have to approve it.
That was just to amend, so now let's approve the amendment.
And so this is the one that anybody ineligible can vote, can't vote. Um, yeah, absolutely, can, okay, now we're voting on the actual motion, which now reads, strikes out holiday tree, and puts in beverage, paper goods, water bottles, snacks, coffee, creamers, Ziploc bags, foil paper.
Marín Fonseca?
Yes.
Michelle? Yes. Anthony?
Ineligible.
Ruben?
Ineligible.
Cynthia? Angela? Hugo?
Ineligible.
Troy?
Ineligible.
Yoli Garcia? Victor?
Yes.
Tom? Manuel? Aki? 8:00, motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Any opposition to adjourn? Any adjourn? Did you say that? Opposition?
Let's everybody help to vote this place up.
I don't know how to turn this stuff off.
Where does this go?
Everybody help. Over there.